Members, this is the session on judiciary and legal administration. I will advise the team to come in in the moment. The Secretary for Justice will give a speech and then the Judiciary Administrator. The members who would like to speak, please press the button now. Mister Paul Lam, please.
Chairman, members, good afternoon. Under one country to system as the only common law jurisdiction in the country, we enjoy unique and rival streams. We have been dedicated to enhancing the rule of law construction, developing quality and diversified professional services, and directly promoting our strength in terms of legal and dispute resolution services to contribute to our country's high-quality development. The total estimated expenditure by the DOJ for twenty twenty five to six is about two thousand five hundred and seven point seven five million dollars, representing an increase of about twenty five point two percent over the revised estimate for the previous financial year. But that is only a slight increase of about two point two percent over the original estimate of last year. In particular, the estimate for court costs and breathing out expenditure for this year is about three hundred and thirty nine million dollars higher than the revised estimate for the previous year, accounting for about seventy percent of the overall increase in the estimate. While the estimate was made based on the case being handled and impending or possible new cases, the actual expenditure will ultimately depend on the future developments and outcome of those cases and the expenditure arising from unforeseen cases. It is therefore not entirely within the control of the DOJ. From the questions raised on the estimates of expenditure for this year, we know that members are particularly concerned about three areas of our work, that is legal and dispute resolution services, foreign-related legal talent training, and the strengthening of collaboration with the G P A. First, on continuously consolidating our position as an international legal and dispute resolution services, we have been deepening the mediation culture in Hong Kong. We will actively support the International Organization for Mediations establishments of headquarters in Hong Kong and showcase our importance role as an international legal and dispute resolution service center. The I O M A T is the first international intergovernmental organization to set up its headquarters in Hong Kong and the world's first to dedicate to resolve international disputes through mediation. Same as other international intergovernmental organizations, the I O M A T once established will make its own arrangements and decisions for its secretaries and future operation. The government will maintain communication with the I O M A T and discuss arrangements for any additional resources required. In fact, negotiation on the convention on the establishment of I O M A T were concluded last year. We are preparing for the signing ceremony of the I O M A T convention in Hong Kong. Following the adoption and entry into force of the I O M A T convention, the headquarters will be formally set up in Hong Kong, with its opening expected by the end of this year or early next year. It is conducive to establishing our role as the center for mediation in the world, attracting dispute parties, mediators, lawyers, and other professionals to come to Hong Kong for mediation. On continuously promoting foreign-related legal talent training, the DOJ officially launched the Hong Kong International Legal Talents Training Academy during the Hong Kong Legal Week last year to facilitate capacity building and roll out programs of the academy, including the Hong Kong Common Law Practical Training Courses, co-organized with the Supreme People's Court, the National Training Course for Talents Handling Foreign-Related Arbitration, co-organized with the Ministry of Justice, and the Conference on Climate Change and International Trade Law, co-organized with the U N Central. They were very well received. The major tasks of the academy in the future include nurturing a team of foreign-related legal talents who are familiar with the thousand-rolled countries' legal systems and are capable of assisting mainland enterprises in going global to provide a sustainable supply of legal and dispute resolution talents for national strategic initiatives such as barrier and roles, complementing the sustainable developments of international legal and related organizations, and nurturing talents for the I O M A T. Three, continuously taking forward the rule of law construction in the G P A. To fully leverage the unique edges of Hong Kong against the picture of a one-country-to-system free jurisdictions for advancing the rule of law construction in the G P A, we have been actively seeking to extend the coverage of the measures of allowing Hong Kong investment enterprises to adopt Hong Kong law and to choose Hong Kong as the seat of arbitration. With the support of the Central People's Government, the two measures were included in the second agreement concerning amendments to the Mainland Hong Kong C P A on trade in services, signed in October last year for the first time as liberalization measures for facilitating trade in services, manifesting express support for extending the coverage of the above two measures in the G P A. To implement the two new measures, the relevant mainland authorities made an announcement in February this year, stipulating that the above two measures will be extended from Qianhai, Shenzhen to the two palace cities of Shenzhen and Zhuhai. And the measure of allowing Hong Kong investment enterprises to choose Hong Kong as the seat of arbitration will be extended from the palace free trade zones to the nine G P A cities. The DOJ will continue to monitor the situation and continue to maintain close communication with mainland authorities and the sectors to consolidate practical experience and create favorable conditions for further extension of the measures. Moreover, the legal departments of the three places released a consolidated G P A mediator panel in December last year to promote the wider use of mediation in the G P A. The DOJ will continue to foster collaboration on commercial arbitration in the G P A and establish a panel of arbitrators to further enhance the multifaceted dispute resolution mechanism in the G P A. We will set up a dedicated platform for G P A lawyers and a G P A legal information platform to promote the integration of regulatory frameworks and foster the collaboration of talents in the G P A to bring about more opportunities to the legal sector and facilitating the development of an international business environment in the G P A. We will continue to implement the policy initiatives of the DOJ on all fronts to strengthen the rule of law in the community, make good use of our connectivity of the common law system with the mainland and the world, and support the rule of law construction and high-quality developments of the country. I conclude my opening remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Esalaung, Judiciary Administrator. Thank you. The judiciary has the constitutional duty to ensure effective and efficient administration of justice. Court business is an essential public service. It is entirely beyond our control in terms of the demand for court services, but we are constitutionally obliged to handle and dispose of all court cases in a fair, reasonable, and efficient manner. We are also fully aware of the budgetary constraints of the government. We will continue to make prudence and optimal use of resources in discharging our constitutional duty as far as predictable. The draft estimates for this year is two thousand eight hundred and six point two million dollars, representing an increase of one hundred and seventy point two million dollars or six point five percent over the revised estimates. This represents the necessary and essential requirements for the judiciary to handle the persistently heavy workload, manage court waiting times, and take forward various technology and reform measures to ensure effective administration of justice. The next additional financial resources required are mainly four. One, filling assisting judicial vacancies and engaging temporary judicial manpower to help improve waiting times for proceedings at all levels of court, and to fill non-judicial vacancies while supporting court operation. Engaging additional and dedicated judicial and non-judicial resources to expedite the processing of cases relating to non-reform on claims and enhancing support to judges in the area. Expanding the use of information technology and enhancing I T security in the judiciary and coping with price adjustments to major essential contractual services for court operations. On judicial manpower, the establishment of judicial posts now stands at two hundred and eleven, while the number of serving judges and judicial offices is one hundred and sixty. In recent years, we have been conducting more frequent and regular open recruitment exercises for filling judicial vacancies at all levels of court. The recruitment exercises in twenty twenty three yield positive results. The latest round of recruitment exercises for judges of the Court of First Instance was launched in November last year, while that's for district judges and permanent magistrates will be launched later this year. We will continue to monitor the judicial manpower situation and engage deputy J J Os to meet operational needs when necessary as far as predictable. Non-judicial manpower. In twenty twenty five to six, there will be a net decrease of eleven civil service posts following the lapse of eleven time-limited posts. In addition, ten vacant posts will be deleted upon review of operational needs. Ten posts will be proposed to be created for meeting operational needs, including the application of various technology initiatives to meet the emerging needs of the courts and registry operation and the relevant legislative work, promotion of greater use of mediation as an alternative dispute resolution, and enhancing I T security management and the implementation of new I T security measures. In the following, I will give an overview of the judiciary's work and operation on court proceedings. In twenty twenty four to five, we will continue to cope with the, we continue to cope with the challenge of a persistently heavy workload at various levels of court with, which involved more complex civil and criminal cases. The total caseload in twenty twenty four was around nine percent higher than the average of the past five years. Through the concerted efforts of J J Os and support staff, the judiciary demonstrated exceptional resilience in twenty twenty four. The overall caseload cleared was about ten percent higher than the average of the past five years and around six percent more than that in twenty nineteen, prior to the outbreak of the pandemic. The judiciary has been making proactive efforts to expedite court proceedings through multiple measures while steadfastly upholding the principles of justice. Overall speaking, the average waiting time for civil cases at various levels were met. There were longer waiting times for criminal proceedings as the Court of First Instance because of the complicated nature of cases. But for other levels of course, we handle cases at a faster pace. As at twenty twenty four, the judiciary has cleared approximately two thousand two hundred and sixty, around ninety-six percent of over two thousand three hundred and fifty anti-extradition amendments bill incidents, cases, and over two hundred cases, or around eighty-six percent of about two hundred and thirty national security cases brought at various levels of court. Though the outstanding cases include quite a number of complex cases requiring long trials, with the engagement of additional judicial manpower and the implementation of various measures, we anticipate steady and substantial improvements to court waiting times for proceedings at all levels of court in the coming years. I will move on to judicial review relating to non-reform on claims. In twenty twenty five to five, four to five, we continue to be faced with the continued influx of cases relating to non-reform on claims. Over the past four years, on average, we dealt with a thousand and five hundred and sixty cases a year, which was comparable to the average number of cases received in each year. We have been actively taking various measures, including deploying additional and dedicated manpower resources and streamlining processing procedures to expedite the disposal of cases. In addition to appointing retired judges to serve as deputy high court judges, in February twenty twenty five, we have launched a special scheme under which eligible private practitioners from the legal sector will be appointed as deputy judges of the C F I non-reform on claims, exclusively for the purpose of handling cases relating to non-reform on claims during varying appointment periods. We tentatively plan to appoint around ten such special deputy judges. Three such appointments have been made so far. We will suitably streamline the processing of cases by judges and also the presentation of judgment or decision notice by judges. If the scheme works smoothly, we expect to be able to dispose of over two thousand cases each year. Miss Esalaung, my apologies. We all have your speaking notes, so please be succinct. Many members are waiting to speak. Thank you. On family justice reforms, through various measures, we will enhance the efficiency and effectiveness of the family justice system, including its new sets of unified procedural rules, implementation of the family masters system, and the continual promotion of the use of family mediation services. On mediation, we will continue to enhance the wider use of mediation as an alternative dispute resolution mechanism in court proceedings. Over the past several years, over half of the mediated cases referred by the judiciary reached full or partial agreements. Now, lastly, on greater use of technology, we have been deepening the adoption of technology to enhance court efficiency. We have launched a number of new initiatives, in particular, the Integrated Court Case Management System, or I C M S. It was launched in twenty twenty two. By mid this year, we will extend the I C M S to the high courts and other levels of court. From the middle of this year, we will launch two additional measures to enhance the adoption rate. First, for parties or litigants using conventional paper-based mode as the high court level, we will require them to submit an electronic copy in respect of the case types. By twenty twenty six, we will require all litigants to use the electronic litigation platform to submit documents. We will continue with our efforts to promote the system. On remote hearings, starting from twenty twenty, some two thousand one hundred remote hearings were heard remotely. Reception was great. And with the court's remote hearing ordinance taking effect on the twenty eighth of March this year, we will continue to promote the use of remote hearings in appropriate cases. Starting today, at the level of Court of Final Appeal, we will start a palace scheme to live broadcast selected judicial proceedings. The palace scheme will be reviewed in two years' time. And also, we have deployed the voice detect system in our courts. Late this year, we will test out the generation of transcripts through our voice detect system for better efficiency. Lastly, I T security is also an area which we attach great importance to. Within this year, we will update the I T security policy and strengthen the I T security measures in alignment with the latest standards stipulated by the government in terms of data security. Now, for court security, this is also an important area. We still have to deal with a large number of high-profile cases. So we will implement crowd management and security measures to ensure order and security at courts. And finally, we will continue to make efforts to explore feasible ways and means to enhance the efficiency of judiciary administration to provide better services to court users and members of the public. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, J A. Eleven members have requested to speak. The lineup is Ms. Yoonis Young, Mister Bill Tang, Mister Jimmy Ng, Mister Houdan Chow, Mister Martin Liu, Ms. Kamun Cam, Mister Leitong Kwok, Ms. Maggie Chan, Professor Priscilla Leng, Mister Ambrose Lem, and Mister Dorian Kong. We have one hour left, so four minutes for each member, questions and answers included. Let's start with Ms. Yoonis Young. Thank you. I'd like to ask about S J oh five three and five four. Both were asked by me. Oh five three, about training, I mean, the Hong Kong International Legal Talents Training Academy. The government said that about five point three million dollars are spent covering four people in the relevant establishment. The academy was set up since la, was set up in October last year. In January twenty twenty five, there was a course on Hong Kong Common Law Practical Training Course. And in February to March twenty twenty five, it is a course or national training course for talents handling foreign-related arbitration. In the next paragraph, the academy is said to be working closely with other legal professional bodies. I'd like to know how we can continue to train local legal talents. Will we put in place any certification system or long-term training course? Short-term training might not be sufficient for the DOJ to train the legal talents in Hong Kong. We do need longer courses and training programs. So in relation to the office responsible for legal talents training, as I understand, all of the officers are time-limited supernumerary positions. Do you have any indicators? Do you have any longer-term planning on training local legal talents? All right. Ms. Jessie Wong or Mister Paul Lam, S J? Thank you, Ms. Yoonis Young, for your question. The academy was set up last October. It is a time limited, time-limited basis with four officers. We are still exploring the future work direction. We've launched two programs targeting judges in mainland as well as foreign-related legal matters. We held a seminar on international climate change with U N C I T R A L. And there are also arbitration programs. Say in September, we will be holding cross-boundary crime programs with the I C A C academy. We don't just target mainland legal talents. We also focus on training local legal talents. Marine Times Law is very popular, so we are still planning different training programs where manpower resources are allowed. We would like to meet the demands for different legal talents, say those in mainland China or those in the Belt and Road Initiative. We need to take stock of the effectiveness, the feedback after the training programs, and then we will make timely adjustments. All right, regarding S J oh five four, I asked about the number of arbitrators and mediators. The DOJ doesn't have a tally on these figures. If we do want to train local talents well, we do need a database. So I hope that we will have a database which will show the current local situation. S J? Say for the website of M B A R Association as well as the databases of other arbitration organizations, I agree, we do need a database for future plans. I believe these figures can be accessed on different websites, and we simply need to collate all the figures or information we have online. Mister Bill Tang? I'd like to follow up on Ms. Yoonis Young's question. J A oh seven and J A oh nine. It's about V T T voice-to-text technology. Usually, when an oral judgment is delivered by the presiding officer at the labor tribunal, it takes a long time for the litigants to obtain a written transcript. So I'd like to know whether written judgments or decisions are covered by the V T T technology. About J A oh oh nine. It's about different courts and tribunals. At the labor tribunal, one P P O and eight presiding officers. While in the labor tribunal, there were two courtrooms that were dedicated to handling M P F offsetting cases. Following the cancellation of such a mechanism, we are expecting an increase in the number of such cases. Do we have sufficient manpower for that? Next, on the coroner's court, we have an aging population in Hong Kong. And in fact, we are expecting an increase in the number of such cases in the coroner's court. There are only three coroners in the coroner's court. Do we have sufficient manpower or judicial officers? J A? Thank you, Mister Bill Tang. Regarding the V T T technology, it mainly helps judges and judicial officers, J J O, to help them conduct trials or hearings. In the past year, we did a lot of tests. We wanted to enhance the level of accuracy to eighty percent or above. Towards the end of last year, we enable all J J Os to use this function. It requires certain equipment in the court, and Labor Tribunal is on the level of maturity. We haven't yet expanded the function to the Labor Tribunal yet. And in the future, there may be functions available or equipment available in Labor Tribunal. In relation to transcript functions, we don't use the V T T technology at present. After tests, we may be able to expedite the production of transcripts, and this is exactly we need to look into. This year, or later this year, we will try to add the production of transcripts to the contracts. Upon the completion of a court hearing, court users may not have to apply for a transcript or a decision using the existing approach. Regarding the manpower at Labor Tribunal, they can cope the existing workload. Presiding officers at Labor Tribunal are magistrates. If need be, we may redeploy magistrates to the Labor Tribunal. There were economic activity changes in society. We'll keep a close watch on the situation. In relation to the coroner's court, in the past two years, we conducted a very comprehensive review on court procedures. There was an uptake in the number of cases, but the waiting time was reduced significantly. We simplify the procedures, and later this year, we will publish the practice directions which court users and J J Os will follow, and we are confident that the situation will improve. Next, Mister Jimmy Ng.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to follow up on J A oh two seven on the implementation of the I C M S. Next year, it is compulsory for the legal sector to use I C M S as well as in E bundle. Legal practitioners will definitely face difficulties in this regard. While I still remember, there were electronic filing methods before the introduction of the I C M S, and it was quite cumbersome back then. Will the judiciary provide any support or demonstration in this regard in relation to J A oh three six? It's about the I O M A T. I'd like to know the latest progress. An I O M A T will come into operation soon. J A? Thank you, Mister Ng, for mentioning the I C M S. It's indeed one of the most important measures. It was launched in twenty twenty two at the district court level, and this year we will expand it to cover the high court as well. At the high court, we will see a massive increase in the use of the I C M S. This is because at the high court, hearings cover a lot of documents. That's exactly why we have conducted an introductory session. It saw an attendance of hundreds of people, both online and offline. We will let professional hours in order to incentivize more people to take the courses. When the system is expanded to the high court, whether for litigants in person or of legal practitioners, we will impose a mandatory requirement. Litigants will have to submit electronic documents at the same time. So we don't have to wait until next year when we make it a mandatory requirement. We'll continue with this kind of work. S J, regarding I O M A T. We haven't yet signed the convention. So there are still details we couldn't announce right now. We need a consensus before we can announce information, and we need to bear this in mind. There will be a secretariat after the setup of the I O M A T headquarters. State enterprises, community enterprises. We need to let the public know we're going to sign the convention soon. From our perspective, we're using the existing mechanism such as the Ministry of Commerce. We have a close liaison with different units. They know this will happen soon. When more details are available, we will do more explanation and publicity.
We will do more explanation and publicity. We will let them know how we can better make use of this mechanism steered by our country. We are still laying the groundwork for this mechanism. Later this year. We may be able to announce more rules and we can further enhance this um work on this front. Next Mister Holden Chow.
I'd like to ask about J A O O one. It's my question. It's about the waiting hours at different levels of court. This is close to the heart of the public. There was lack of manpower at the judiciary and I understand the judiciary has done a lot in this regard. At the high court and the district court. There are more J J Os. For small claims tribunal, labor tribunal. There are litigants without any legal representation. So is it possible to increase the number of presiding officers or judicial officers in these tribunals? I understand there's a huge demand in these, in these two tribunals. A lot of supporting staff members are required in these two tribunals as well. So what can you tell me about the recruitment of um presiding officers at these S C T and labor tribunal?
Well, the S C T and the L T are magistrates, magistrates level tribunals. In our latest recruitment exercise, we are in the final stretch and we are expecting a certain number of magistrates that will join the judiciary. When it comes to internal resource deployment. There will be more room for us to facilitate redeployment. In case of any increase in workload, we can redeploy manpower. Take the S C T as an example. There isn't much increase in the workload in the S C T. And the cases heard at S C T usually involve a smaller amount of money. And mediation. I mean, we encourage the use of mediation at the S C T. So not, not a lot of cases need to be heard in open court. We believe the use of mediation will help us handle cases and we keep a close watch on manpower. If need be, we will facilitate manpower deployment. In relation to the S C T and L T, there are litigants without legal representative despite a smaller amount involved. Complex legal issues or arguments are involved. As I understand, supporting staff members are required to help litigants in the S C T where there are no lawyers allowed. Of course, it'd be best to handle the cases by way of out of court settlement. But as I understand. When litigants need to appear in person, it means we need supporting staff members to help litigants. Thank you.
Mister Martiniel, thank you Chairman. My question is on S J zero three two, my question. Now in their reply, the judiciary mentioned that in this year they would deepen the mediation culture. Now in government's contract, a mediation clause would be added. That policy has taken effect on the sixth of February this year and also similar mediation clauses will be adopted in various governments departments contracts. So has the administration reached out to the partner institution for the arrangement. If these institutions refuse to accept the clause, what are the difficulties? And also, according to the administration. The reason why mediation is not widely adopted in the private sector is that it is very rare for the private legal sector to advise the clients to take the route of mediation. So more efforts must be made concerning this. So in the past year, how did the judiciary encourage the private legal sector to adopt mediation as a clause? As a dispute resolution service secretary? Now I think mindset is the most important thing. The practitioners, including the lawyers, must encourage the clients to do so. Also, the litigants themselves must first understand how this system works and also have faith in this system. Otherwise, they would not follow the advice of their legal advisor to try mediation. So mediation culture is important. So like Mister Martiniel said, the government is taking the lead by adding a mediation clause in all government's contracts. For private legal sector, we have the mediation first campaign which has been ongoing for many years. There are many signatories under the pledge. The pledge is that the private organization or institution would use mediation as the prioritized method of dispute resolution. Now in May this year, we will launch a new round of mediation of mediate first. We will step up on publicity. And riding on the, on the opportunity of the signing of the conventional I O M A T and the establishments of the headquarters in Hong Kong. We will further enhance the mediation culture in Hong Kong. On how we can encourage more in the private legal sector to try out mediation. Of course, we understand the concerns of the private legal sector about the impacts of mediation on their business. So we are focused on mandating the litigants to try mediation first in court proceedings. That includes proceedings in family courts and matrimonial matters. If the parties refuse to try mediation first, there will be an it will be reflected in the award given or in terms of cause award. So the government will take lead in adopting mediation. We will launch a promotional campaign on mediation riding on the establishments of the I O M A T headquarters in Hong Kong. I have personal experience in this as well. Now I see an increase of cases over the past two years, but I see a drop of the number of cases in court this year. That shows that mediation is effective in resolving disputes. Allow me to supplement. We will conduct reach out activities into the community on the promotion of mediation. Many legal disputes involve property management and building management. It added to the burden of course. So together with the F E H D and the E E B, we will launch the pilot scheme on community mediation to deepen the understanding of mediation among property management companies. That would speed up dispute resolution, resolution amongst households and buildings. Miss Kam and Ken, thank you Chairman. Now as the J A said, legal aid is important in the judicial system. Now in her speech. She mentioned the J R proceedings involving non reform on claims. There are still eight thousand five hundred cases. Now among the fourteen thousand cases, only eleven thousand or fifteen thousand were handled. Now the success rate was just two point nine percent. Now J A zero zero eight, I asked about the two thousand twenty four figures. Some two thousand five hundred forty nine cases were granted leave for review. Now ninety five percent of the cases were not granted leave and one, only one point three percent of cases were granted leave that accounted that represented thirty two cases. So I think the judiciary has very strong incentive to enhance the workflow. Now there is a special scheme mentioned in this speech for hiring dedicated judges. Besides that, I think we need to establish a dedicated, dedicated court. We have debated appointing the merits of a dedicated court in the motion debates last week. Now according to the reply, to engage deputy judges, you spent some fourteen, fourteen million dollars last year. So this is an enhanced scheme, but the amount of money spent is a concern. So what is your position on establishing a dedicated court? Now besides a breakdown on the number of non reform on claims application. I also think that we need to have a breakdown on the grounds for applying for judicial review. However, the judicial judiciary administrator said that this breakdown is not available. So either the judiciary or the D O J should keep a record on the grounds for judicial review. J A, thank you. Concerning non reform on claims, this is something that we attach much importance to. So starting from February this year, we have introduced a special scheme. Before that, we have engaged additional deputy judges to deal with these cases as the court of first instance level. Now the C F A is snow under by a large number of cases. So we have engaged more retired judges to serve as deputy high court judges to deal with these cases. This year, under this special scheme. We plan to appoint eligible private practitioners from the legal sector to act as dedicated judges solely for dealing with non reform on claims. And they will deal with these cases by a fully electronic means. That will help the engaged deputy judges to dispose of these cases more efficiently. Of course, a hearing will still be heard, will still be conducted in court, but otherwise they can dispose of these cases by paper. Now we need to work out the schedule with these private practitioners. We plan to appoint around ten such special deputy judges and it will come with a four million dollar budget. Now we will make use of our internal resources to support the operation of these deputy judges. So that would, in a sense, be similar to a dedicated court. We don't need to build an additional court premises for that purpose. Now with the use of electronic means, we will speed up the handling of cases and also in terms of handing down judgments or decision notices, we will also streamline the workflow. Now initially, we think it will be fifty percent more efficient than the conventional model. Now if the plan is rolled out smoothly. Then we can dispose of over two thousand or even two thousand four hundred cases each year. So that would outpace the influx of applications each year. And then we can start clearing the backlog of eight thousand cases. We will continue to enhance the workflow. Now what about judicial review? On J R. In the reply. These are the numbers concerning non reform on claims. For J R figures in relation to other cases, the number is smaller. That's why we don't have a breakdown. The judicial review applications are in relation to a wide range of cases. So we have only listed out the number in relation to non reform on claim. In other words, given time, you can provide us with the breakdown. We need time to catalog the score of cases not related, not related to non reform on claims. Now according to the J A, even with thousands more influx of cases, we need four years' time to deal with, to clear the eight thousand case backlog. So we need, really need to speed things up. Thank you. Next Mister Leidong Kwok.
My question is J A zero one seven. My question is similar to that of Miss Kam and Ken. I agree with Miss Khan. Like the J A said, every year, the maximum number of non reform on claims we can process is some two thousand. Even without any new J R application, you still need four years to clear the backlog. And last year, the number of application, new applications stood as a new high. So after appointing the ten special deputy judges, you can only break even with the new applications made each year. So you would never be able to clear the eight thousand case large backlog. So you really need to think of some more effective methods to clear the backlog. Now you are going to appoint around ten special deputy judges. But that is on a temporary basis. What does that mean? For the ten special deputy judges to be appointed, will that be your maximum target? And will you only appoint a smaller number of deputy judges? Now concerning streamlined procedures for presenting judgment or decision notice, that is great, but the major hurdle lies in the abuse of Form eighty six eight. They would take the box requiring an oral hearing and then a hearing date must be set. That is the major hurdle. So how can we break through this bottleneck? J A. Thank you. Now we said initially, we plan to appoint ten special deputy judges. They are lawyers by trade. So we need to accommodate their schedule. If they can serve for a month's time, that would be great, but we will take two or two weeks or three weeks of the time if they can accommodate us. So the ten, the number ten is just our initial target. We, we will not stop there. We'll continue to discuss the matter with the two societies. Now after the streamlining of process, we have already shortened the process by half. So we have confidence that we can clear the backlog in due course. We can't make any promises at this point. But we will surely strive for better efficiency. So what about streamlining the procedure for oral hearing? Thank you. Now according to the high court rules. There is provision stipulating that unless the litigants request otherwise, an oral hearing would be arranged. Now more than sixty percent of the application were dealt with by way of paper disposal. So unless there is proven difficulty to justify denying an oral hearing to the, to the defendant or applicant, we will accommodate them as best we can.
Well, next member, Miss Maggie Chen. Thank you Chairman. I'd like to ask about S J O O seven and O O eight. They're about law tech and the use of A I. S J O O eight first, in the second paragraph of the reply. The legal sector, including small and medium-sized law firms, are motivated to use law tech. There's a lack of equipment as well. There should be greater promotion. I encourage the promotion of law tech. And in twenty twenty-six, the ICMS will be made mandatory. So I'd like to ask the. The DOJ. Will you consider having a tax concession when it comes to the use of law tech in the legal sector? Both software and hardware are required. In fact. The most direct to the most direct way to incentivize the legal sector to use law tech is financial provision. On the use of AI, that is SJ oh oh seven. In the first paragraph of the reply, it talked about EBRAM International Online Dispute Resolution Center. Since twenty twenty-two. How many resources has the government devoted to this area? How effective are the measures? In the reply given by the administration in point number three. Hong Kong Generative AI Research and Development Center, Hong Kong, Guy. And a model or or an application are mentioned. AI poses a great challenge to the legal sector. Some clients. Use AI to formulate preliminary legal opinions which. They take to ask lawyers or consult lawyers, so they don't necessarily have to consult a lawyer. That's exactly why we need. A professional. Model, AI model in the legal sector. I'd like to know whether there's any there's any roadmap. Do you have any timetable in relation to the development of an AI law model that is suitable for the legal sector? SJ, three questions. Thank you. For the first question about tax concession. Well, I believe this is not under the purview of the DOJ alone. Probably Miss Maggie Chan is aware that under the steer of the deputy SJ. There is a working group on law tech. For example. Financial concessions may be provided, but is it the most suitable solution? We have a financial deficit right now. I do believe we need to. Take a multi-pronged approach, but we don't rule out any possibility. We'll take into account all proposals floated by members. We also understand the challenges faced by small and medium-sized law firms. We are mindful of such challenges. In relation to EBRAM. There's an agreement we have entered into. Every year, there is a requirement. We will only provide financial provisions when certain standards are met. We have provided quite a lot of opinions to EBRAM in the hope of improving the services it provides. We saw an increase in the number of users. We also saw a number of. An increase in the in the number of um users as well as an improvement of services. There's indeed an improvement. Comparing with a few years earlier on. On the use of AI. Apart from the group on law tech I just now mentioned. We are pondering with the U S T as well. We are still in a pilot stage. We aim to collect figures and make improvements. We'll see how we can expand. The scope of application. When we have more more information, we'll share with members. Next, Professor Priscilla Lam. I'd like to ask about my questions, JA oh two four and oh two five. Non-reform on claims. Many members are concerned about this issue as well. Just now JA talked about ten deputy judges dedicated to non-reform on claims. You spent about one billion dollars on handling bogus refugee cases in Hong Kong. Many lawyers are practicing. By trade. Well, you could you may probably look for even more lawyers. Time is money. When we save time, we save money for Hong Kong. I've taught administrative law and JR for almost two decades. These issues are not very complicated. You can ask more lawyers to. To join the panel on join a panel panel of deputy judges. When it comes to JA oh two five, from twenty twenty-four to twenty-five, there was a downward trend. What is the reason behind this trend? For another question, SJ oh one oh and oh one four, it's about the subcontracting work of the DOJ. Is it possible that the DOJ will reduce the number of briefing out cases? Can the DOJ? Recruit more lawyers? So that these lawyers can be in-house lawyers who will handle these cases within the DOJ? I noticed a reduction of expenditure, but then, after all. It still stands at two hundred million dollars or so. In my opinion, national security law cases shouldn't be briefed out. When it comes to international law, I believe we should groom our own local talents. When you brief out fewer cases, you may as well save ten million dollars. And you can spend it on recruiting lawyers. Well, Professor Lam, four questions you have you have already asked. Well, SJ oh one one, I have a comment. For cases involving the government. Well, when the DOJ is tasked with handling the cases, then the responsibility is is shifted from the department to the DOJ. Well, you may as well use mediation. You shouldn't shift all the cases to the DOJ. JA, in relation to non-reform cases. I agree with Professor Lam. If we can. Invite more legal. Talents to act as deputy judges, then we'll do so and we will also be making flexible arrangements. As I mentioned, it doesn't have to take a long time. Well, I mean, the deputy judges can help us for a short time. And they will help us um. Handle the cases, and this is like a special court. We won't put a cap on the number of deputy judges. Ten isn't our cap. It's just that so far we have identified ten deputy judges in relation to the time. In twenty twenty-two to twenty-three, it was in the middle of the COVID pandemic. Court services were affected by public health concerns. Court services were suspended, hence more use of remote hearings. When the pandemic has subsided. Things were returning to normality. The legal sector finds that it may be better to have face-to-face hearings. Well, it doesn't mean we won't continue to promote the use of remote hearings after the passage of the bill. That is the Court Remote Hearings Bill. Before the passage of the bill, criminal hearings couldn't be heard in a remote manner at all. For the non-trial proper of criminal cases, say for interlocutory hearings. We are liaising with the CSD proactively to see how we can make it possible in relation to technicality. So that more remote hearings could be held. This will help us expedite the handling of cases while in relation to briefing out SJ. Of course, the more manpower, the better, but we are subject to resource. Constraints. We are already recruiting as far as possible. After all, there are a lot of applicants. For government counsel or prosecutors in the government. We need lawyers of different levels of experience to handle different cases. It's not just about the figures. We need distribution of resources. Some cases may take longer time to be handled. So how do we redeploy manpower within the DOJ? Sometimes it's not about the lack of manpower. If some of our colleagues are experts in some areas, it may be. More ideal to the results or the outcomes of a case. When we act. Um, on behalf of the government or when we represent the government, we need to. Sometimes consider working with briefed-out counsel in order to fight for the best outcome of a case. When we work with lawyers outside the DOJ, we may be able to improve the outcome or services. Well, we will look for. Counsel with a more reasonable rate so that there will be. Um, better use of resources. Mister Ambrose Lam, I'd like to ask about SJ oh two oh. In the reply, five million dollars are mentioned. In relation to briefing out work to counsel in private practice. Is it enough? JA oh one nine. About eleven time-limited positions will be cut. So what are the arrangements for these officers? Will they stay within the judiciary? Or will they retire? Or will they leave the judiciary? The judiciary said. Ten positions will be cut, but at the same time, an additional ten posts will be created. So I'd like the judiciary to explain. You're going to cut ten posts and you're going to create ten posts at the same time.
SJ, about the five million budget for the Law Drafting Division. Oh, that's the. Estimate only. The law drafting work is heavy at present. So besides our in-house law draftmen, we will also. Engage experienced. Retired colleagues to continue to offer their services through post-service contracts. And also we engaged contractual staff. The Law Drafting Division has been able to meet its operational needs. Based on. The above model so far. So despite the heavy legislative work. I believe that the quality of the Law Drafting Division's work is up to standard. JA? Thank you. Now, for non-directorate grade civil service post, we adjust the establishment each year. That is part of our internal. Review work. We want to ensure that public money is well spent. Now, for the eleven time-limited post. They were created to. Discharge. Short-term duties. The tenure of these posts ranged from three to five years. After the delivery of the work, the post would be. Deleted. Now. There are clerical supporting staff like typist and other clerical staff. These posts will not be kept on a long-term basis because they can be replaced by technology. Now, there are also supporting work for. The ICMS system. So these are new posts. Created by the new needs. So the ten posts include a judicial class, system, analysis, and so on. So for the existing position holders, they are civil servants. Some of them. Would be redeployed internally to other positions after the expiry of their post. For senior positions. The position holder would be given. Promotional opportunities and other redeployment opportunities based on our internal procedures. Mister Ying Kong, thank you, Chair. My question is about JA zero zero nine. About the Lance Tribunal, the Labor Tribunal, the Small Claims Tribunal, the Obscene Adicals Tribunal, and the Coroner's Court. Now, these tribunals, in terms of their manpower establishment, is some two hundred in total. Now excluding fringe benefits, the salary package costs some. One hundred fifty million dollars each year. Now, the yearly cost has been on the rise from one point eight billion dollars in twenty twenty-three to two point one billion dollars in twenty twenty-five. Now, rule of law is important and the court system is also very important. So for these tribunals. Is there a way to integrate these tribunals, especially the Small Claims Tribunal and the Lance Tribunal? Now, in other common law. Jurisdictions, consolidation has been sought as well. On one hand, they can save manpower. On the other hand, they would like to encourage e-settlements. That is easily applicable to Small Claims Tribunal. If we can't encourage parties to try mediation in small claims. litigation, how can we how can we encourage them to do so in larger cases? Now, in twenty twenty-one, there is a working group in the UK studying how the small claim procedures can be enhanced. In the tribunal. So can we consolidate the functions of these tribunals to enhance the manpower efficiency? Now, SJ, CO three three, application of AI. Will the. Application of AI be extended to the drafting of law? This is already being done in the UK. With the help of AI, maybe we can enhance the efficiency of our. Law drafting work. JA, please. Thank you. In terms of the functions of the tribunals. They are established under various pieces of principal ordinances. If we need to consolidate them, we have to amend the law as well. If we need to consolidate them, we have to amend the law as well. Now, in operation, for example, the Small Claims Tribunal and the Lance Tribunal, in by twenty twenty seven, when the new district court building is commissioned, the Lance Tribunal will be subsumed under the District Court. It will present an opportunity to consolidate the manpower and the J J O resources. However, the Small Claims Tribunal is a mesopotamian level court. So its function cannot be consolidated with the Lance Tribunal. But Miss Kong's point is valid. For the Small Claims Tribunal, we are advocating the use of mediation. Now, the Small Claims Tribunal and Lance Tribunal, ninety percent of the cases have been resolved through the use of mediation. If we can adopt technology to further enhance the efficiency of a manpower, we will do so. Some of the District Court Judges are deployed as deputy judges to enhance the efficiency of case handling. Secretary for Justice about A I? Thank you. Now, the D O J has conducted a pilot scheme internally to see how effective A I is in assisting our work. Now, A I's application is wide. We need to understand clearly the policy directions of the policy bureaus so as to ensure that our products best suits the policy intent. That is rather difficult for A I. But A I does enhance our efficiency in terms of our clerical work. So we will test out the use of A I to see what areas are best suited for the use of A I. We will continue to follow up on the progress. Now, Mister Yim Kong, when you press the button, the line has been drawn. I still have two minutes, so please limit your question to one. That should suffice. Thank you. Now, my own question, S J zero four nine. On the budget for the I O M A D headquarters. Now, what is the recurrent funding for the I O M A D? Now, the reply only covers the salary package, but not the total expenditure for running the I O M A D. So does the administration have the total estimates for the I O M A S operation? Now, with the increase in its operation, will the governments have to allocate more money to fund the organization? Now, I stress that I O M A D is an international organization. What we do is just to provide a place for its running. Now, of course, in terms of maintenance and repair and other daily operating costs, the governments will fund it. It is some thirty million dollars each year or twenty or twenty-eight million dollars to be exact. The specific figures will be finalized after the signing of the Convention of I O M A D and after negotiating with the I O M A D. The same applies to manpower resources. Now, with its headquarters established in Hong Kong, maybe we can second some of our colleagues to work within the organization. So that is something to be finalized after the establishment of the organization in Hong Kong. We will keep members up to speed and also seek members' consent and support before finalizing the details. Thank you, S J. That concludes this session. The next session will start at four fifty. Thank you.